At this time, I'll call to order the Tuesday, May the sixteenth, two thousand seventeen, meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like you to please bow your heads with us and observe a moment of silent prayer or reflection. And this evening, we have the pleasure and privilege of having a young lady from our Iredell County four-H Club, Hannah Lofton, who's a member of the Troubleshooters, which means she's a crack shot.
(inaudible)
Okay, Mr. Smith, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, we dealt with the two closed-session items, property acquisition and attorney-client, as well as an economic development item in the pre-agenda meeting, so we will have no need to go through those at seven o'clock.
As adjusted and noted by Mr. Smith, are there any further adjustments to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
A motion to approve, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign, motion carries unanimously. At this time, we would like to present a special award to, in recognition of Ms. Cindy Atkins, who has received a Volunteer Service Award, and Commissioners Norman and Halp will do the honors.
I want to invite you to help recognize a distinguished citizen we have in Iredell County. Cindy was awarded a recognition that's historic to Iredell County. No other Iredell County citizen has ever received this award for her volunteer work. Her husband Brent is here, her mom Billy Clutch is here, and I think Leanne Darty is here also from hospice, and Terry Phillips also. We'd like for you guys to come up at the end and take a picture with her. Come on up now, you need to share in her award. Matt, come on up also. Cindy Atkins, an Iredell County native, has been honored by the state of North Carolina for dedication for her community through her tireless hours of volunteer work. On Wednesday, April twenty-sixth, Cindy officially received the NC Governor's Volunteer Service Award at the ceremony held in Charlotte. She received a Governor's Medallion Award for her volunteer service as an award bestowed only to twenty people in this state each year. Cindy is the first and only recipient of Iredell County citizens so far, and we hope to have more to follow her leadership. So we, on behalf of our board and all the citizens of Iredell County, want to present you with a certificate and recognition of your award, and want to ask you guys to applaud with us on her behalf. Thank you.[599.16][599.16](applause)
Oh, really?[601.16][601.16](laughter) Thank you again, Cindy, and congratulations. We'll now move on to item six, appointments before the board. Our first appointment is Megan Redford, who is a community health planner with the Iredell County Health Department, and she is going to present the two thousand sixteen State of the County Health Report and the two thousand seventeen County Health Ranking Report.
Good evening. Thanks for letting me come back and share our State of the County Health Report. Tonight, that's what I'm going to share with you, along with the two thousand seventeen County Health Rankings. This document is our State of the County Health Report. It was approved by the state in March. The State of the County Health Report focuses on changes related to the county's health data, our top health issues, and details work that we've accomplished during the last year, and addresses our select health priorities. To help you further review this data, I'm going to point out more of the important statistics. As you can see on page two of the document, the demographic data is almost identical to that that we presented to you in the two thousand fifteen Community Health Assessment. But to bring to the community's attention our target populations, we dove deeper into the data and highlighted some of those important vulnerable populations. On page three, it's noted that cancer, heart disease, and chronic lower respiratory disease are still the leading causes of death in Iredell County, and over half of all total deaths are related to preventable chronic conditions. If you turn to page four, you'll see that rates for sexually transmitted diseases have remained relatively stable over the past four years, and just below that, you'll see that the Iredell County infant death rate is higher than that of North Carolina. It's also worth noting that the disparity rate among African-Americans remains substantial compared to that of their white and Hispanic counterparts. Common risk factors and characteristics related to infant mortality are listed on the chart just below the infant death rates, and as you can see, more than half of mothers are overweight and obese, thirty percent aren't breastfeeding, and fourteen percent of mothers have less than a high school education. If you follow along to page five, you'll see that our selected health priorities and our action plan goals. Our action planning process took about three months to complete, and it's in partnership with community organizations, they provide input. Our organizational partners and members of the community play an important role in the development of our action plans, and we continue to work with them during the three years of the deployment and implementation of these plans. I'm happy to tell you that our action plans have been approved by the state, and we're well on our way to fulfilling them. Included on pages six through eight, we've highlighted some of our accomplishments throughout the year. To address chronic disease, the Iredell County Health Department worked in partnership with Iredell Memorial Hospital to bring colorectal cancer awareness and education to the residents of Iredell County. The Health Department also worked with ten other counties in the region on a minority diabetes prevention program. We screened more than fifty residents for prediabetes, and we hope to begin healthy lifestyle classes during this next year to help out those people that screen positive for prediabetes. On page seven, you'll see the efforts we've made on our healthy eating and active living strategies. During the last year, our Share the Harvest program brought over ten thousand pounds of fresh produce to three safety net organizations in Iredell County, and those are Iredell Christian Ministry, Mooresville Christian Mission, and Matthew Twenty-Five and Harmony. We also worked with the community garden at Grace Baptist Church to install a sign in their garden to make it more visible within the community, so individuals will know where they can go to help harvest fresh produce and also access it. We've also been working very hard to grow our Get Fit Iredell program, and we now have over five hundred members that participate in our various physical activities opportunities throughout the year. This year, we had a kickball and a dodgeball tournament, a dance event, and we just recently hosted an obstacle course five K, and all those events are completely free to participants. So then if you'll turn to page eight, you'll see the accomplishments that we've made in risky behavior prevention. Our health educator has been working very hard to establish healthy living curriculum into the school system and in various youth development centers. We participated with the Boys and Girls Club to deploy a summer program last year, and we plan to expand that program and bring it back again and into other organizations. Last March, we hosted a Tobacco Prevention Champions event, where we brought nearly fifty people together that provide point-of-service care to expectant mothers and provide them with baseline tobacco use prevention knowledge, and this year, we've been able to supply those same people with drug substance-free living materials that they can provide to the patients that they see. And just as fast as February, we helped to execute the Iredell County opioid epidemic guidance for healthcare providers event that you all heard about. We brought around one hundred and twenty-five people together to shed light on the growing opioid issue that's facing our county. Another important part of the State of the County Health Report is to identify emerging issues in Iredell County. As displayed in the data earlier, health disparities and infant mortality are a growing concern that we plan to focus on during the next year. Another growing threat is the Zika virus. While the virus didn't make its way here this past summer, there's a prediction that it could this year, and we're working really hard to educate our community on ways to prevent that from happening. Some new initiatives that we're excited about is the continuation of, the continued growth of our Drug Abuse Free Iredell Coalition, and the continued participation in the region-wide Minority Diabetes Prevention Program. During the next year, we definitely look forward to expanding our youth-based initiatives and reaching younger generations while they're still impressionable. And with that, you have our two thousand sixteen State of the County Health Report. Now, I'm going to share with you the two thousand seventeen Health Rankings, and that was a separate document that you got. The rankings are a collaborative effort between the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation and the University of Wisconsin Population Health Institute, and they measure the health of nearly all counties in the nation and rank them within their respective states. These rankings are compiled using county-level measures from a variety of national and state data sources. The data is then broken down by category, and were ranked amongst one another in two areas, either healthy outcomes or health factors. Iredell County ranked twenty-fourth in health outcomes and eighteenth in health factors. In two thousand sixteen, we ranked twenty-second in health outcomes and sixteenth in health factors. The rankings are based on a number of categories, including average length of life and quality of life, those make up the health outcomes, and then for health factors, we have healthy behaviors, clinical care, the physical environment, and social and economical factors. If you have any questions about either document, I would be happy to answer those for you.
Thank you, Megan. Very informative information. Is this going to be available on our website? Can we just go ahead and put that out?
I don't know if it is.
Is the State of the County Health Report and the Community Health Assessment are available on our Health Department webpage? If you go on the left-hand side, it'll say Healthy Living, you click on that, and it's under Healthy Data.
Let's make sure we have a link to that, so people can get to it. There's some interesting data here, and I do want to thank Jane Henson, our Health Director, for our Public Health Department, for a great job that she and her team have been doing as far as coordinating efforts across our community, so that we really have a team of teams as far as nonprofit organizations, our healthcare community, the public healthcare community, and our government entities and agencies, all working to address these issues. I do want to highlight, and I'd ask Vice Chairman Bowles to chime in, to give his perspective, he's been very close and personal with this particular issue, is the Drug Free Iredell Coalition, that's a combination of our task force on public health and well-being, that's worked to pull together a multi-agency, multidisciplinary approach to dealing with the opioid epidemic. It is a silent epidemic, it's out there. People don't realize it, they don't talk about it, but it's showing up in our emergency rooms, the numbers are skyrocketing throughout the country. There isn't a county that doesn't have this problem.
That's correct.
But we've tried to be out ahead of the power curve there to try to deal with this, but it takes talking about it and getting everyone to understand that everyone actually has a role to play. Anybody that takes any pain medication needs to be securing that and getting rid of it because it is finding its way to our children.
Absolutely.
And our task force, you know, lots of good ideas, a lot of synergy there, and we're investing in that. We've had a recent, we just finished up with our review of our projected, proposed county budget, and one of the things we added in, a line item, to hire an individual to coordinate all of these efforts, because there's multiple agencies out there, and so we need to put legs on all these good ideas, and there's no silver bullet. It's a multifaceted, from public health to law enforcement to schools, to our faith communities, to our parents, everybody's got to be involved. So, Tom?
The most astounding statistic that I have heard is the Surry County one, that in two thousand sixteen, they had more opioid deaths, overdose deaths, in January of two thousand seventeen than in the entire year of two thousand sixteen. That's staggering, and that is not just what you would typically think, inner-city problems, that's in rural America. And it's huge, it really, really is, and it's going to affect us and our workforce eventually, because the fact of the matter is, we can do all the economic development we want, but if we can't get folks to show up on Monday morning, it's going to be hard to do business. But I would encourage everyone to, the FBI, Homeland Security came out with a video, Chasing the Dragon. If you get an opportunity, go home and Google that, that is an eye-opener. Thank you.
And thank you, Megan, and Jane, and all your team. Appreciate it. At this time, we would like to ask Blair Ritchie, please come up. Blair is our Director of Emergency Medical Services, EMS. This week is EMS Week, and we are going to enter in and pass a proclamation in support of EMS. I'll just mention that our EMS department, if you look at the growth of Iredell County, we are projected to be growing, this last five years, we grew at about six percent growth rate, we're right at about one hundred and seventy thousand souls in this county, and that was about double the rate of most of the counties surrounding us, with the exception of, you know, Union County, and Cabarrus County, and Mecklenburg County. The next five years, we're projected to increase an average of twelve percent, and that, once again, is projected to be more than most of the other counties by a factor of two. Besides just being a great place to live, work, and play, Iredell County also has to provide services to all those new people, and if you look at the projections for the ages, we actually are like, are projected to have an increase in elderly population as opposed to young population. Everybody tends to think, oh, we're growing, they're all going into schools. Well, actually, we have a lot of folks moving into the county that are retiring here, and we have a lot of folks that are aging in place. But what that means is that we have increasing demands on our emergency medical service, and perhaps Blair can share, you know, some of the increases in terms of call volume that you've had. I'm putting you on the spot, but you probably have that in your hip pocket, and you can share.
Just a little bit. We have been looking over the last five years to determine our growth rate, and just for a minor statistic, in two thousand twelve, we had about nineteen hundred and eighty-seven calls per unit on average, and in the year two thousand sixteen, it was up to about thirty-five hundred calls per unit. So our board has absolutely been in support of us increasing our fleet so we can meet the needs of our county.
So, you know, we're looking at ways to go with a distributed basing concept, where we're getting more EMS units further out into smaller locations so that their response time is going to be improved, and that when you got one being used, you don't have to stage the others as far to be able to backfill or cover that area. And we recognize that, you know, distance does not equate to time, particularly in the southern end of the county.[1462.83][1462.83](laughter) And so, you know, trying to figure out the right places to put your assets to be responsive is an interesting process of evaluating a lot of different data. So I want to, on behalf of all of us, thank our EMS department and those crews that are working twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and at this time, prior to reading the proclamation, do you have anything further?
Yes, I'd just like to start, thank you all for reviewing the request to adopt a proclamation to declare EMS Week. We seek to recognize our first responders, our medics, our telecommunicators, that are just a few groups that are always in service and always ready to respond to the needs of the citizens. EMS Week this year is May twenty-first through twenty-seventh, and it marks the forty-third National EMS Week. In two thousand sixteen alone, EMS responded to thirty-four thousand four hundred and thirty-nine calls, and I wanted to take the time to thank you again for supporting our services.
Well, thank you, on behalf of us and our community. Any additional comments? You say what you do, all right? Well, I'll read this, EMS Week Proclamation. Iredell County Board of Commissioners hereby designates the week of May twenty-first through twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen, as Emergency Medical Services Week, and whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, and others, and whereas the members of the emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas Iredell County desires to continue to improve upon its emergency medical services system in order to assure all citizens the highest standards of emergency medical care, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, the Iredell County Board of Commissioners, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May twenty-one through twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen, as Emergency Medical Services Week, and whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, and others, and whereas the members of the emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas Iredell County desires to continue to improve upon its emergency medical services system in order to assure all citizens the highest standards of emergency medical care, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, the Iredell County Board of Commissioners, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May twenty-one through twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen, as Emergency Medical Services Week. With the theme "Always in Service," we encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Is there a motion to adopt the proclamation?
So moved.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Vice Chairman Bowles. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign, motion carries unanimously, and we therefore adopt this as EMS Week Proclamation for May twenty-one through twenty-seven, on this sixteenth day of May two thousand seventeen, by authority of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners. Interesting note, the EMS service started in, what was it, nineteen seventy?
Four.
Four.
I think, no, five, I believe.
And prior to the EMS service being started, people got picked up and were taken to the hospital by funeral parlors, and so we've come a long way. And so, we've come a long way.
We have, we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, at this time, we have a public hearing on Item 7.1, to conduct a public hearing and to consider a request by Malle Colavita with NVR Southeast Region to release zoning and subdivision jurisdiction of the John Clontz Family LLC property to the town of Mooresville. Mr. Matthew Todd, from our Planning Department, will give us a summary of the application. And did we get out those flyers, information? From what ETJ is?
Did you have copies, Matthew?
I did not have the copies. Those were emailed out and attached, but we did not bring copies of those.
Okay, well, how about putting that on the website? I think that's important for people to understand what ETJ is. And it might be helpful if you kind of give a broad overview about what it is and what it isn't.
Yes, well, good evening to the board. First, just up on the screen, and it's in the package you received, is the property in the bluish-red color. That's an odd color on the new screen. But the request is for the cross-titched area. It's off Ponderosa, which is off Williamson Road. It's about 36 acres. The ETJ process is a process that the statutes allowed to basically allow a city's jurisdiction to take control over the zoning rules and the subdivision rules outside of their city limits. It's set up at the statute level based on the size of a town to go one, two, three miles outside of their city limits. And in order to achieve the ETJ, a release has to be granted by the county if the county has zoning in place, which Iredell County does have countywide zoning. Therefore, any ETJ release has to come before this board for a release. Our ordinance actually has two scenarios for an ETJ release, and that is, one, when an applicant comes directly to our office and requests it themselves. The other is if a municipality comes before the board and they request a larger area to be released. There's two different processes. The municipality one, it's a little more involved because you're dealing with a larger area typically. It requires meetings before we get to this point. Where the one that, such as this, where it's just an applicant coming before asking for the release, it does just come to this board for the public hearing as a one-step process. And again, all that, some of that's laid out in our local ordinance, but the state statutes enable this process to happen. And then, for this particular property, it is scheduled to be annexed by the town of Mooresville in December. So regardless of the ETJ, it's on the list to be annexed, and Mooresville has approved it, meaning they're gonna, they've said that they would provide water and sewer to this Again, the proposal is for residential use of the property. The applicants are here, they can probably talk a little more detail how they are planning to use it at this point. I would be happy to answer any questions from the board at this time.
Questions from Mr. Todd? Comments?
Matthew, when an applicant comes forward on an ETJ request, the, does the property and the planning of the property, explain to us the difference between a targeted population and a restricted community? Like a targeted community, like what these people are proposing? Do they have a restricted plan for their proposal, or is it a targeted community?
It may be best that the applicant answer that. Because from our end, we've not been provided that information.
Okay. So, based on the paperwork you've been provided through the, either the applicant or the town of Mooresville, timeline-wise, correct me if I'm wrong, in February, the town of Mooresville approved to run water and sewer to this area, right?
Correct.
When we started discussing this a couple weeks ago, it was on the June agenda. Mooresville annexes based on their policy twice a year, June and December, correct?
Yes.
And you don't know why they moved it from June to December?
I do not, other than I was told it was meant to be in December. But in February, it does, within the application that we first received, it said June as the date.
Your first application said June. The, if we would release ETJ, what then happens, what has to happen within 60 days?
The town has to assign zoning to it. So, there'll be another public hearing that's run through the town of Mooresville, it'll go through their planning board process, and then it'll go to the town council for approval on a rezoning. So it has to get zoned through the town of Mooresville.
Right. So, in the, so if we release ETJ, the town of Mooresville does not have to annex the property, correct?
Correct.
So what happens if we would release ETJ and the town of Mooresville decided not to annex the property? What happens to that particular property? Is it still, is it regulated then still by the town of Mooresville zoning?
Yeah.
Or does it revert back to our zoning?
They've gone through the rezoning process, it stays in their zoning district. It doesn't necessarily become part of their city limits until they annex it. In fact, if you look on the map, most of the, most of this area here is ETJ. It's not, there's a little city limits in this area, but most of that on the screen that's showing Mooresville jurisdiction is just ETJ.
So Mooresville could have kept it on their agenda for June and just annexed it, and we wouldn't be here today, correct? If it was still on their agenda? I mean, the request could still be here, right?
Correct.
I guess one of my concerns is the, our constituents around the neighborhood. What we have to do, I think, through this process, our goal is, all of us in some way, shape, or form have communicated either with the developer, or stakeholders, or community members. So what our goal is, Mooresville doesn't have to have our permission to annex that property.
That's correct.
And I think we all agree that, based on our conversations, we would, if it's going to be developed, the development plan makes sense for it to be developed in Mooresville because of water and sewer. Because I don't think, none of us would like to have however many septic systems out there if the property was developed under our current zoning that's in place now from us. So hopefully during our hearing and talking to the developer, we can address some of the concerns and hear from our stakeholders what their concerns are. But I just wanted to clarify that Mooresville doesn't have to have our permission for us to release ETJ, and that's a misunderstanding that's out there now that has been stated to some that if we release ETJ, they have to annex. The only thing they have to do if we were to release ETJ is establish zoning within 60 days. Okay, thank you.
I'm curious, can Mooresville refuse to accept a release? Or can any municipality say, "We're not interested in establishing zoning" or do anything?
Yeah, my understanding, if Mooresville did fail to follow through with the rezoning, then it just stays in the county's jurisdiction.
Okay, so it's just a default, if they don't act, then it just reverts? Thank you, Matthew.
One other question, Matthew. Just for point of clarification, to clear up some things that's misunderstood too. Mooresville has, in the past, annexed a lot of properties that have not had ETJ released beforehand, right?
That's correct. They've gone straight to an annexation from county jurisdiction to city limits. It has happened in the past. It doesn't always go through the ETJ process.
And there's quite a bit on the agenda, on the books for this year, that would be the same thing, that's not requested ETJ release, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any further questions?
Mr. Chairman, Ben's passing out the handout you mentioned earlier.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Right, at this time, I'll go ahead and open officially the public hearing. And we have a number of folks that have signed up. If you'll please note, there's a five-minute limit, and if you have a designated spokesman or something like that that can sort of focus in on points and not be unduly repetitive, then that'd be great. But everybody's going to get the time to be able to share whatever their concerns are.
Would you want the applicant to go over, they've got a presentation, and I don't know if it could possibly answer any questions?
I was going to ask them first.
Okay.
Yeah, just as part of the public. Okay. So if we could have the applicant just share some of the insights, specifics that may answer a few questions that are out there.
My name is Jeremy Horton, I'm with Timmons Group in Charlotte. And we just wanted to add a few things to follow with Matthew's presentation. Here we have a comparison of the property if it were developed.
Can you speak up, please?
Yeah, here we have a comparison of the property if it were developed in a county zoning and a Mooresville zoning. In county, you'd only have well and septic, there would be no traffic or road improvements. There's no architectural control. There's various residential uses allowed, and all your roads would have drainage ditches beside them. In the town of Mooresville, they would extend public water and sewer. NC DOT would mandate a TIA, and that would require road improvements. NVR is committed to architectural, they have architectural commitments for the site. It would be an age-targeted community, and all roads would have street trees, sidewalk, and curb and gutter. I think you may have seen this a few years ago, this was the previous plan that was submitted by another developer. And this is what we are proposing. One of the big benefits of annexing into the town is the water and sewer extension and the road improvements. This shows the forest main that would run along Alcove and then to the site, and so almost two miles of forest main. The state requires a minimum of four inch, so there is the potential there for future growth. And I'll let Malle talk about the products.
Commissioners, Chairman, thank you very much for the opportunity to appear before you tonight. My name's Malle Colavita with Ryan Homes. Little information on Ryan Homes, we started as a family-owned company in 1948. Since that time, we've become the fourth-largest builder in the nation. We've had a presence here in Iredell County and surrounding market for the past 35 years. Within that time, we've put 200,000 families in homes in the surrounding area with over a dozen communities in the immediate vicinity. Particular to this site and to the product that we'd be offering here, what we envision for the community is a, how do I slide that? What we envision for the community is an age-targeted product. It exclusively comes with a master-down floor plan and an option for a second floor with or without additional bedrooms. That space on the second floor can be used as common space, an additional living room, or it can come with up to two bedrooms. But the home itself is limited. Ryan Homes has about over 100 different products that we typically offer for any particular community. Here, we are limiting that to four, four products. We're limiting this to four products, four that are specifically targeted for an age-targeted community. So all of them will have master-down, master-down floor plans. Square footage will range somewhere between 1,700 and 2,100 square feet. The external material, there will be no vinyl, there will be stone, brick, hardy cement board that you see here, and again, no vinyl. We'll offer a two-car garage that'll be front or side-loaded depending on the homeowner's preference. Everything will come with a 30-year architectural shingle. Pricing will start in the 300s and go up from there depending on how it's customized and what additional options there will be. And with 94 homes that we are attempting to create, that should generate a tax basis of $40 million. The community itself will have HOA covenants and restrictions, of which we will not allow on-street parking, we will not allow lake access, and we will also restrict the architectural and color redundancy so that it doesn't look like a, doesn't look like a production community where every home looks the same. Ryan Homes is very particular about if your home has a certain color and a certain architectural look to it, any homes within that vicinity cannot have those same colors and those same architectural variances in order to create a little bit more personality for the community and differentiate the product itself. To that extent, I'd be happy to answer. Any additional questions from the board?
I have one. Sort of earlier, Mr. Commissioner Hoult spoke to, I was to the opinion that it was going to be a covenant, 55 and older, so it's just marketing to that age, not in a covenant in the deed then?
No, it will not be covenant in the deed. We will be, we've selected products that are catered to the 55 and older crowd, know whether that's someone who's 50 or a divorcee. The product and the lot size itself is not conducive to a family with three children that can raise a family there. So this is specifically marketed to and targeted towards, but we can't, we cannot limit ourselves to a definitive 55 age restriction. We would like that flexibility to be able to target someone who's maybe 50 or someone who is an empty nester that has kids in college or thereafter so that we're not handcuffed by what it is. But what we are handcuffing is our product. So we're not putting a 3,500-square-foot home here. I'm willing to commit to the fact that this is the product, this is the variance of the product, this is the square footage of the product, and I'm happy to submit our HOA covenants and restrictions to be able to support that.
Right. I've been down there and visited the land. It's got a good slope to it because everything goes towards the water, and I see there's retention ponds. Who will monitor, will the HOA monitor those retention ponds or?
That's correct. That is exactly correct. So what we'll do here that's a little bit different than in non-age-targeted communities is that we will, our HOA covenants and restrictions will be a little bit more thorough than they normally are in that we will offer complete maintenance of the entirety of the site, both for the resident who, if is older, is not able to maintain their lot, we will do it for them as part of the HOA, as well as maintaining all the sediment ponds, filtrations, basins, and all of the areas that control stormwater and the common open space that we'll have. We'll typically have a passive amenity in these areas, maybe a walking trailer, a gazebo, some grills. We'll have elaborate signage and additional landscaping in certain areas that we will maintain through the HOA.
On the, on our packet agenda versus that picture there, it almost, it appears that y'all actually touch the water, and I just want, in that one, it doesn't appear that you touched the water. Will there be dockage that y'all will have for this community?
No, we'll restrict in the HOA covenants and restrictions that there will be no lake access. access, and this parcel does not, on any boundary, touch the lake.
One question I have. What our goal is, we agree that if this area's going to develop, the water and sewer makes sense instead of septic, the improvements. What we are here to do is try to ask for... Get questions answered here from our stakeholders because what happens is, once Mooresville annexes something, you know, the... What Mooresville does impacts our county citizens, but our county citizens on a spot annexation like this cannot hold them accountable for whatever decisions they make that impact them.
Sure.
So what our job is, we want our citizens to try to sell and use their property as they desire to do. What we want to try to do is lessen the impact through proper infrastructure. You know, we went down and did a walk-through there. Some of our board members have met with you guys. What our goal is, is to try to help you guys be good neighbors, to help this situation work out through communication with Mooresville. I think our communications have been lacking a little there, but what the main concerns that we've heard so far, so you know, is a lot to do with the infrastructure, the number of homes, you know, looking at the egress and ingress. You've got two proposed entrances and exits coming out on Ponderosa, but they still go out onto Williamson. So my opinion is, I think it would be greatly beneficial to that area if you had another way out onto Williamson other than Ponderosa, just as an idea to keep in mind once you hear from our citizens. And the number of homes, I understand from a monetary standpoint, it makes sense. You've got to have a certain figure because you pay for, as a developer, the water and sewer that goes to that area, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so, what we have to try to do is try to make it work for everybody involved. And I think all of our board and the stakeholders agree that that area is going to develop one way or another. We just want to make sure the infrastructure, everything makes sense, the impacts are positive as much as possible. Any construction is going to have some of that, the water runoff, the slope coming down to the lower properties toward the lake. I'm sure you guys have looked at all that. But once you hear, and all that these guys talk, but once you hear from them, hopefully you can go back, hopefully toward the drawing board and make some concessions that can lessen those impacts, hopefully for the infrastructure and other of their issues. So we appreciate what you do. You do have a great positive impact. I've seen your work. But we wanted you to understand, it's nothing against you guys. What our goal is, is to make sure the impacts are within what our targeted goals are for the county, and our citizens that won't be annexed can have a say, hopefully now, and to the town of Mooresville, on the restrictions and guidelines for you guys to make sure the infrastructure and the impacts are positive to their area, not negative.
No, and we certainly don't want that.
Sure.
And I appreciate that input. We held a voluntary neighborhood meeting, maybe about a month or so back, and a lot of your constituents were able to voice some of their concerns, and that was much appreciated and absorbed into where we are today. And the goal here is for all of us to collaborate in order to find a plan that certainly works. A point of clarification, we were told by Mooresville that there was a... There was an error on the letter that went out in that we were never in consideration for the June annexation. We are... We were always slated for the December annexation, which certainly begs the consideration of the ETJ release between now and then so that we can continue to facilitate the conversation with Mooresville.
Well, that... Well, where that happened was when we started doing a little background a couple weeks ago, the ETJ request was coming in now, and our question was, why do we need to consider it? Because it's on Mooresville's June agenda. It was on the paperwork that came to us, so it didn't make sense logically for us to release ETJ when Mooresville's going to annex it in June.
Correct.
You know, so that started the process, and then, you know, we want to hear from our stakeholders, so I'll be quiet and let you guys hear from them and let you guys talk.
I've got one quick question here. With your targeted product...
Yes.
Does that allow for grandparents to raise a grandchild there? Because there's no covenant restrictions that says there can't be somebody under 55 live there.
That's correct.
Is that correct? If it were a target... If it were a restricted 55 and over, then that could not happen, correct?
That I don't know. I don't know the particulars of how children play into certain situations. I'm just not familiar with that instance happening. I couldn't say.
Just curious on that. Thanks.
I've got one quick question for you to get done, too. Can you... You know, part of the... I guess the hurriedness in this request was to get a traffic impact analysis done before school was out because traffic's always more impacted because of more people on the roads, kids moving back and forth, and parents taking and whatnot. Can you not order your own traffic impact analysis without having Mooresville... Some... You know, usually Mooresville triggers it, but y'all still pay for it. Can you not order your own without the trigger from Mooresville necessarily, or the trigger from the ETJ release?
We would have to have a... We would have to have Mooresville's consent on the areas that they want us to study. And in addition to that, just from a developer's perspective, we would not feel comfortable moving forward with spending the tens of thousands of dollars of doing traffic counts in a TIA without knowing whether or not we're putting that money to good use in being able to get the proper zoning and site plan approval that we would need in order to substantiate this project. So really, it's a timing discrepancy. If Mooresville was like other surrounding municipalities that annexed on a monthly basis, then no, there would not be this request before the board. However, because we have to wait until December, we were able to do traffic counts before then, and because Mooresville, if the ETJ were to be released, we would be able to move forward with consideration of the design, site plan review. They would be able to now look at this site plan and comment on it appropriately through the various divisions, which they're not able to do either until it's released with the ETJ or it's annexed. So what we're trying to do is save the consideration of the landowner from being able to... From being cornered in a position where his land is annexed, and then we look to entitle it appropriately. And if we don't get that proper entitlement in order to do our site plan or to build to this specification, then that's not a project that we're likely to pursue anymore. And now we have a landowner who is annexed into Mooresville and paying Mooresville taxes, who now has a property that isn't going to be developed.
But on the other side of that is, you're looking at one property owner, we're looking at a lot of property owners that's affected by an ETJ release. My point is, what would prevent Mooresville, in your view, from annexing you in June? What was the reason? Since they've known about this in February, to your knowledge, I was told a copy of what I think... I don't know if it came from Mooresville or you guys.
It came from Mooresville because I saw the same letter you did.
The ETJ release. The original request was in June. You guys knew about it in February. They knew about it in February. If you're going to pay and invest the money for a traffic study, would that not be a good investment up front?
I would prefer it be in June. That would be much more...
Right. Well, that would save a lot of headaches, but, you know, our thing was is the... It doesn't have to be... ETJ doesn't have to be released for them to annex. We have no control over that. So I've explained that before. I mean, you know, your developers, the people involved with you in the past have made positive impacts in the county. Our goal is to look out for the constituents that won't be annexed because they won't have any way, shape, or form to hold the town of Mooresville elected officials accountable for what happens intentionally or unintentionally, good or bad. So that's kind of the... That's kind of where we're at.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Appreciate the overview. And what I'd like to do now is to open it up to hear from the folks that have signed up to be heard, and I'll just go right down the list. When I call your name, if you'll please come up to the podium and, for the record, announce your name and your address, and please, you know, you can look and see the countdown there. Don't feel like you can't go over a few seconds. It's not... This isn't the Gong Show. But, you know, we do want to try to not be terribly repetitive. If you hear someone else just make your case perfectly and you want to say ditto, then we got where you're coming from. Okay, first, Ms. Joan Danielson.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like for them, if they would, with the help of our planning staff there, Matthew, maybe point out where their house is or their lot, if possible.
Joan Danielson, 172 Ponderosa Circle, and... The red, just the red. Oh, I can barely see our lot. We're right there. We're the low lot, so everything from this holding pond will go straight naturally down to us. So that's a little sidebar. First off, I would like to extend a sincere thank you to all the commissioners who came to actually see our neighborhood and to speak with me on the phone and just take the time to really see the lay of the land. And I could tell that you were interested in truly seeing what was there and what our neighborhood was like. Excuse me. Now, we had a neighborhood meeting Saturday, and so I read this to the neighbors paragraph by paragraph, and so I'd like to relay that because they all said, "This sounds fine." So I don't want to, you know, vary from what they heard me say on Saturday. Well, we understand and know the property will eventually be improved. However, the residents of Ponderosa Circle and Catalina are strongly requesting that Iredale County not release the Klontz family property for zoning and subdivision to the city of Mooresville with the present plan being offered. And my feeling is, once I receive more information, I just took real exception where the developer and the realtor seemed to try to separate us from the county, and we weren't getting all the information, and the county commissioners were not getting all the information. And particularly on the April 10th meeting, I found out after the fact that a county representative was to be invited, and we had the meeting, and there was no county representative. And so, when the developers returned to the commission, to my surprise, I found out they said, "Oh, the neighborhood is so in favor of this," and we're going, "What?" So that was a big shock that they did not relay our true concerns, which you'll hear tonight from my other neighbors. And as far as what we've already been talking about, the consideration for just ruining our neighborhood aesthetics, the average lot size tends to be an acre and half-acre. Some people have bought two lots to extend their privacy. Our home design, the tax value, our well-water and Lake Norman water quality, the increase for the Iredale Statesville school population if there's no restrictions, and that does not impact Mooresville graded school district. The infrastructure damage to our road and a traffic congestion nightmare trying to get out of our dead-end state route 1191 with just a stop sign, no left-turn lanes either way onto Williamson Road. And then I also was commenting on where I had no idea that the developers had been already contacting the city of Mooresville as of February and were getting written letters. I saw that after the fact, too, and about the December agenda with Mooresville. And in my opinion, I don't think that the developers are being really honest, and they're choosing to say certain things with whomever they're speaking to. So I would ask you, please do not release the land, and I want to thank you for this opportunity to voice my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Danielson.
Yes.
Thank you. And you mentioned traffic congestion. Can you just elaborate on the... What you experience at different times of the day, just coming out of Ponderosa onto Williamson?
Okay. Since I have the fortunate time flexibility of being retired, I can choose not to be out on the road between 7:30 to 9-ish or 4 o'clock to 6 o'clock to come out from my road. I just stay hunkered down because it's like, both ways, you can't turn left, you can't turn right, it's backed up from the light, it's backed up across the bridge. People from Diamond Head are trying to come out from a stop sign. And there are times even during the middle of the day... Oh, lunchtime, too. That's another no-no for me. It can take me five minutes to try to turn left onto Williamson to go north from Ponderosa Circle. Often, I turn right, make a U-turn to go north. And sometimes, by the good graces of some other drivers, they'll stop and give me an opening to make a right-hand turn. So that's kind of daily traffic life.
Thank you for the rhythm of life. Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Danielson. Next, I have, I believe it's Diane Carter. Okay, that'll be fine, Mr. Carter. Harry Reed.
Where you can see the road.
And to perhaps be most efficient, I'll give you a heads-up for who's on deck. Next would be Alan and Karen Howard.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Harry Reed.
Your address?
My address is 105 Ponderosa Circle. We have very little property left. We used to own everything from Mount Morn Springs to the middle of the lake, the causeway that goes over the lake. They developed Diamond Head and other areas in there. Between the Klontz family, the Reed family, and the Comer family, most of the homeowners here indirectly or directly receive their property. Of course, we're in favor of selling what little property we have left. We feel like properly organized development is the way to go. If you look at Diamond Head and the BV Belt Development across the street, you'll see that it was very well done. Our opinion is that it needs to be properly done and properly vetted so that everyone becomes a good family member of the community. We hope you would consider that. It bothers me to some degree, maybe bothers, isn't it? But I hear about water running over a road and holding ponds, and it's almost like that is a matter of contention when it should be a matter of law. You should be able to control that. These people should have recourse if it's not being done properly, and the development should be done properly. We wouldn't have this problem again. I just feel like there is hundreds of jobs available if they develop this property. I feel like there's millions of dollars of investment going into this property, and there's a tremendous tax base for the town of Mooresville if we're annexed. I have to tell you that I'm not bragging, but I've got a college degree, and I'm now totally confused about what you guys were talking about. I don't know whether I'm left holding the bag if we're not annexed by the town of Mooresville, if we're going to have to pay property taxes on being annexed and not... Nothing happening and not having water and sewer. I was here a year ago... and not having water and sewer. I was here a year ago and it was, and it seemed to be a lack of direction at that time. I would like to see some direction being taken that gives merit to everybody here today. We have owned that property for some 70 years. My grandfather, his children all lived and most of them died on what is now Williamson Road. We know it as Highway 1109. I played on the road when it was dirt. So, to say that we don't have an investment is kind of a joke. But we would like to have an opportunity to sell our property. I'm 73 years old. We've been holding that property for over 30 years so that we could get water and sewer and get, since we own property, the acreage that we have left is on Williamson Road. It's Williamson and Ponderosa. So, we'd like to be fair to everybody. We'd like to be fair to every family. We'd like the right type of development to occur. But somebody has to get off dead center here. It doesn't seem like we're moving ahead at all. We're just dancing in place. I'd like to see us move ahead one way or the other. Whatever it is, our family is willing to deal with it. But there needs to be some movement somewhere. I thank you for your time.
Thank you much, Mr. Reed. The Alan and Karen Howard? Okay. All right. And Eddie Brotherton will be on deck.
I'm Alan Howard. I live at 825 Webb's Road in Denver, North Carolina. I'm actually a grandson to Ed Nessie Klontz and a nephew to Uncle John Klontz that owns the property. And I thank the commissioners and ladies and gentlemen for the honor to speak to you tonight. I'd just like to tell you a little bit about what I know about the place. When I was a boy, they used to dip sand out of the creek down there to the... That Harry talked about, the dirt road, that there's a dirt road right after the bridge. Grandpa, he got sand from the state because he let them dip. And he had a wonderful road that come all the way up through the place there. So, it came from the creek up through a pasture, up to the barn, and then on up to like Harry Neal's and the granaries and the little barn and all in the back. So, most of the people on the Ponderosa either are where the barn was, where the pasture was, or where the wheat field was. And I do farm that field, that's part of that there, which used to be an old wheat field also. And after Grandpa died, Uncle John took over the land. And I'm sure everybody on the Ponderosa knows, as long as Uncle John kept that property, y'all didn't have one thing to worry about because that made him, that was heaven on earth to him. But now, most of, well, there's only three of us, me and Eddie and Doug. We kind of take care of the property, but we got five others that are different sections of the country and they have no use for the property. I mean, they get no value out of it. So, you know, they would like to have their part and no more than there is to farm. It really isn't economical to even farm anymore. I farm it as an honor to my grandparents and Uncle John to, you know, it just makes me happy to say, "Hey, this is some land that my grandfather and my uncle had." So, the next thing I was going to tell you is about wells and septic tanks. When people start drilling wells, especially if you start house after house after house, there are just so many streams down there under that ground and they start getting your water. I know where I live, I'm on water, and when my neighbor waters his yard, I end up with a muddy mess. You know, not to say that that happens ever where, but it sure can happen. And, you know, all y'all have been good neighbors to us over there. I'm over there a good bit, so I can say that. And I think we've been good neighbors to y'all, especially when Uncle John was there because I know he'd take his tractor and his little trailer and if these older ladies or anybody needed something done, he was more than glad to help. And, you know, we've kind of been in this for four years now and we followed every process from the government that they said we needed to follow. And we would like to get this, you know, deal kind of done if we could, just to make it simple. It's been a long process and it's just time after time, we run into dead ends, it seems like. And we'd just like the commissioners, if you would, we'd like your consideration, you know, to help us out a little bit. And for the neighbors, you know, we would like a little understanding on our situation, too. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Mr. Brotherton? Brad Howard will be up on deck.
Thank you again for hearing us. Let me explain a little bit about our LLC.
And you're Eddie?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Eddie Brotherton.
And you live at?
I live at 233 Ponderosa Circle. So, I'm a local down there. Our LLC is just a family, our family, and we put, after John passed away, we, you know, established the LLC. And what we decided we wanted to do was we wanted to put as nice of something in there as we could. Our options run from, again, well, well and septic tank, which we could just jump in there and do, I think, to trying to put together something nice and something that will join in with the whole community. And, you know, we've talked to Ryan. We feel like that they're really willing to put some effort into working with the community. We... I don't know all the reasons, but they really need to see TJ to keep, to get moving. I think, is that right? Is that correct? Okay. But anyway, we were not just wanting to throw something in there. And we do, I do care about the community. I've been there 30 years. Our family has owned this property 90 years. And when the lake come up, like Alan said, Grandpa sold off some of the property and we've kept the rest of it, trying to farm it. But it's just getting so hard now that we really can't do enough to make it worthwhile. And bottom line is that we are going to try the best we can to sell this property. If one way don't work out, we'll have to try another way. We just, it's such a situation with the family and most of them out of, sorry, most of them out of town. It's a difficult situation. And if something happens to somebody, it'll mess, we'll have problems inside the LLC. So, we, like Alan said, we can't keep doing this on and on and on. It just won't work out. So, but I just wanted to put a face on the LLC and try to explain what we were trying to do. And also to say that we have a lot of confidence in Malle and NVR to do the things that we would be happy with them doing. Thanks for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brotherton. Brad Howard? He's waving. Okay. Michelle Cash?
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board members. My name is Michelle Cash. I'm a resident of 196 Ponderosa, which is right here. My husband and I bought our home in August of 2003 from original owners who bought the land previous from the Brothertons or the Klontz family. We were drawn to the neighborhood because of the calm, peaceful nature that we experienced every time we would leave Williamson Road. We think of our neighborhood as a quiet country neighborhood with the hustle and bustle of everyday life a half a mile away. I understand that this land will eventually be developed, but in this current proposal, I am opposed to this development by Ryan Holmes. I have many concerns, traffic, which you'll hear from neighbors talking more about, impact on our single entrance exit, as well as the overall road condition of our street, impact of county services such as fire, which we are currently maintained by the Mount Morn Volunteer Fire Department. We don't have city services, which still wouldn't extend to our road, which is also a problem when, of traffic on Williamson Road. If there's ever an emergency and we try to get the Mount Morn fire trucks down there, it's a nightmare. Police, which is through the sheriff's office, and the potential impact on the county schools since this is not a restricted neighborhood. There is no reason why parents, new parents, can't move into a home with a first-floor master. I have tons of friends who have first-floor masters and who have two kids. And therefore, they'll be in the county schools, which we're all going through a deficit on that and the money and, you know, reducing the class sizes and putting back in the modular buildings for that. But one of my main concerns is the impact on the environment and on the lake. There's a protected wetlands area at the beginning of Ponderosa, which will be at high risk for pollution from the excessive runoff from the land during development and after. And the wetlands are right here. This is all protected wetlands. And also, this is protected wetlands. Additionally, the developer is proposing the three retention ponds on the lakeside, which they will allow to drain into the first two coves on Ponderosa. The developer has not taken into consideration the runoff that is going to occur both during construction and after construction. No berms or buffer zones have been discussed to reroute this runoff away from the protected wetland areas and the two coves on, at the beginning of Ponderosa. The cove is here, this cove, and then this cove, which is behind my home. A pump station is slated to be built also on the lakeside, according to the engineers at the very first meeting, which you folks were not privy to. They were proposing to put the pump station right here. Here's the cove. Here's the pump station. We are all aware of the recent sewage spills from Diamond Head Pump Station that failed and released 8,000 gallons of sewage into the lake. The developer and the engineer at the initial meeting stated that pump station would most likely be at the corner of the loop. My family, my neighbors, my children, children of all ages, grandchildren, swim in this cove on a regular basis. We have seen pump stations fail on a regular basis around Lake Norman. This causes huge environmental impacts on the aqua life, the health of the lake, as well as the harmful nature to those who swim in it. During the meeting in April, which you folks were not a part of, the project engineer stated that he has never seen a pump station fail. And everyone who lives by Lake Norman knows that is a very false statement. The developer must relocate the station away from the lake and the wetlands area and present a proven method to prevent a pump station failure, which will result in the contamination of Lake Norman. All residents on Ponderosa have private wells and our quality of drinking water will be affected by the contaminants from the blasting of the bedrock in the area that will occur when city water and sewer are installed, as well as large amounts of pesticides and additional products from the development, which will run downhill to the coves and the adjoining lake. Additionally, according to your 2030 Horizon Comprehensive Plan for future land use, this land is classified as low-density residential. I've pulled up your map. The land in question is considered low-density residential. The proposed development doesn't fit your terms of low-density. Your definition is that the intent of these lands is to provide a transition in intensity from rural to urban uses and that they maintain a low-density residential character over time. Maximum densities within low-density residential areas should generally be two dwellings per acre, which Ponderosa already has because we're half-acre to one-acre lots. This is not part of the low-density plan of the 2030 Horizon use, as well as the Mooresville plan. It's all the same. I pulled it off the website today. The Ponderosa neighborhood abides by the rules. And according to your future land use, these rules are for the land in question the developer is proposing a medium-density rating. Thank you for your time. I do hope that our neighborhood voices will be heard. We understand the land will be developed, but it needs to be done in a less impactful manner on our surrounding area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cash. Chris Christianberry?
Chris Christianberry. I live on 228 Ponderosa Circle, which is about right there. The issue I'm going to address tonight is the zoning as well. You've heard a little bit about it already. But as presented here, the current zoning is to build these homes on about a seventh of an acre lot. And that certainly, the way we see it as a community, is out of character for our existing community. That's the point that I'm kind of making this evening. It's already been said. But as I understand it, the purpose of zoning is to preserve the character of the community that the new buildings will go in and be built around. So, we don't see, as a community, this character being preserved with this proposed development. As already mentioned as well, my wife and I have lived in this area for 33 years. We really enjoy the area. And as the chairman mentioned, there's been much, much growth in Iredale County. Mooresville has seen its share of it. And as mentioned, we feel like, you know, we live in a high hustle-bustle area and we pull down in our neighborhood, we still, we do, we sense the peace and the tranquility of the neighborhood. That's what we have. We have people that's out in the neighbors. They walk, they ride. We even have skateboarders right there on the road, which is very unusual, I'm sure, in a Mooresville environment. But we really enjoy it. We also are bordered by the lake, which also adds a peaceful environment in which we live. The other thing already mentioned, you know, it's, we're zoned such that we're half to an acre lot. So, we have a lot of lot per house. As proposed, we have, you know, the seventh of an acre. It'll be pretty much all house, no land. We're just the opposite. We have a lot of land with house. We do believe our houses are unique as well. Each one looks different, has a different character, and we appreciate that about the community as well. But as mentioned, how we see this being impacted with the existing proposal is that the houses, you know, we've heard them presented. They look nice. But I've never seen a development that me personally didn't look at and see one individual home looks just like the other. They're right beside and you can reach out your neighbor's door or window and touch the other house. That's not the community we live in. We understand the economics, you know, I understand economics. Put more houses on smaller lots, you get more houses. But it's no reason why you couldn't put exist, a bigger house on a bigger lot and sell it for more money and get the same amount of money, you know? That is a reason. I'm sure they have their reasons for this proposal. But to me, that's a reasonable approach as well that would be in more character with our existing property. We certainly want the property as it's developed to be in harmony with where we're at. I appreciate the owners and I'm sure they care about this property. I know they do. I live with them and I appreciate them and I like them. Good people. But we're all, all good people. We have their sides. We have, you know, both sides of the fence. So, again, we see the construction that's impacted. It'll be spoke on, on the traffic. We think that the proposal as presented, it certainly is out of character with the pump station and the retention ponds that will be there. Again, that will come with a development that potentially could be housed on a half to an acre lot. I've learned some this evening as well. So, but we see that as, it could be a negative impact as well. But especially the lot size, seventh of an acre, we think that would impact even to the, impacting our tax value. And certainly, another reason for zoning is to, the purpose to protect and conserve the existing property values. So, we see that impacting our property values as well. Again, a bigger lot with bigger houses and we don't see that issue, or at least I personally. Again, a bigger lot with bigger houses, and we don't see that issue, or at least I personally don't. So with that said, I would encourage you at this point in time to not release this property to the town of Mooresville due to the fact that, or due to my opinion, and I think most of my neighbors' opinions, that this is clearly out of character with our neighborhood. So I appreciate the time and appreciate your attention to hearing me this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kristenberry. Glenn Kontouris?
Hi, I'm Glenn Kontouris, 194 Ponderosa Circle, which is right here. Okay. I'm in agreement with everything that was said and will be said tonight in opposition to the rezoning and/or release of the property to the city of Mooresville. I have three other neighbors who wanted to be here but couldn't. All five of you were emailed earlier, and there's a copy of this email. If you'd like it, I can drop that off with the clerk. Okay. Last year, we stood before you, and we were successful when you voted this down for a 72-home proposal. The changes from last year are now they want to put even more homes in the same parcel of land while traffic on Williamson Road and the entire town has only increased. I'd also like to address the age targeted. You had some questions about that earlier. They are prevented by federal and state fair housing laws from even mentioning one word about targeting this to seniors or above a certain age. That's standard real estate law. Federal and state has fair housing laws cover that. Also, things have already changed from the April 10 meeting. They told us it would be $400,000 to $450,000, and it's down to $300,000 all of a sudden. We haven't even done anything. A change to zoning, to me, it represents a broken promise. When I bought my home in 2012, I drove past farmland to reach it. I assumed it would remain farmland. I realize that growth, progress, and change are constant, but zoning changes should only be considered when it benefits the community as a whole, not a single entity like a for-profit company. Ryan Homes might argue for the zoning change by claiming they provided needed housing. However, this area is already oversaturated, which has generated massive traffic problems that are well-known throughout the town. Ryan Homes will build, then leave, possibly just begin to build, then leave, as has happened in a couple of their other projects where they started but didn't finish. They won't have to live here with us with these issues. They'll create, and I'm sure unless they're compelled, they're not going to disclose to their prospective buyers that the only way out of the area is through an already very problematic intersection. Even the proposed widening of Williamson Road will do nothing to ease the flow in and out of Ponderosa Circle since the state will never allow a traffic light due to the proximity of an existing light only about 100 yards away. One more thing I'd like to say on the age targeted, they seem to be throwing that out there to appease us, so we picture a tranquil community with, full of senior citizens. Well, I'd like to point out that, without being crass or crude or even trying to be funny, the senior citizens are going to be a little more careful turning out of the circle on Williamson Road. It's going to cancel out any benefit to them driving less. I don't know if that's what their thought process was or not. Now, I'm sorry I keep reverting to traffic flows, so I want to close by imploring the council to not only vote the release of the property down, but to find a way to stop the city of Mooresville from annexing it in the future. Our property values and the way of life are at risk, and we're counting on you. I believe even Ryan Homes would agree that you cannot have infinite growth in a defined space. Eventually municipalities will have to say no to any new growth. Why wait until we reach the population density of New York City or even Charlotte? Say no now because our way of life, I'm sorry, Mr. Leinhardt. Say no now because growth in the Mooresville area has been out of control, and the damage to our way of life has already begun. I'm sure you can see that, some of you live down there. Please do everything you can to preserve the current zoning. Please vote to table this. Please keep your promise.
Mr. Kontouris, could you point out the stoplight you referred to?
I don't know if it's on this map. Yeah, maybe it is. It is, I believe it's right here. Now, we always felt that if a road were to be cut in here, we wouldn't have a problem with this. We wouldn't be here, we wouldn't be talking. Of course, we'd still probably oppose 94 homes. That's pretty impactful. But they talk about that being difficult because the property owner there doesn't want to sell it, or I said, I suggested, why not get, what do you call it when you take over? I mean, domain, he said, oh, it'll take a while. Sorry, that's, I can't answer that. But even if they cut a road this way, that would impact the people of here, and it would make it hard to, I don't think there's a left turn out of here either. But again, anything would be better than putting whatever traffic's generated by 94 more homes. Figure two cars per home at a minimum, what, 500 more cars a day? I timed it a couple times. It took me four minutes and 58 seconds at the worst to make a left turn out of here. The average time of about two weeks that I jotted the stuff down, I wish I would have saved it, was about three minutes and 53 seconds. Most traffic lights cycle in about 30 to 45 seconds, with the extreme being maybe a minute. And that's unreasonable. And that's with the 72 homes being served now. We really can't even tolerate the additional homes that are going to come out of this little strip, which is already zoned for half-acre. Just adding those cars would make it impossible to get out of there. You've been there, you've seen it. You've come down. You were invited, you came. I'm glad about that. You saw for yourself. It's really bad. Sometimes it's not. Sometimes I pull up and I look, left, right, left, right, go. But that's the rarity. That's the exception, not the rule. The rule is you sit there for two to four minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Kontouris. Rose Dixon?
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm speaking from a walker's perspective. I'm a daily walker on Ponderosa Circle, every day, no matter what. I have a dog that reminds me. My husband rides a bike several mornings a week. On my walks, I see a lot of things that someone passing through or looking at a development plan might miss. One thing I notice more than anything, oh, I didn't tell you where I lived. I'm sorry. So I live at 358, and I'm not finding, oh, there it is. Oh, I have to point. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I have to hold. Got it. All right. There we go. All right. I live eight lots away, and that right there is my house. I live on .65 acres. My neighbor here lives on one acre. And I walk around the circle. Sometimes I'll go up, but you can see it gets curvy. Because I'm a morning walker, I got to watch out for the buses. We don't have sidewalks, so you got to be careful. One thing I notice more than anything as a daily walker is how, when a home is under construction, the contractor vehicles rarely respect the speed limit signs, park on the road blocking through traffic, bring road-damaging heavy equipment onto the road, rinse their concrete trucks into the culverts, which run directly into the lake, and throw their trash on the road or culverts. The proof is in the road. Cracked or gouged in front of every home built, and the shoulders of the road damaged enough to crumble off. I cannot imagine the impact of the road damage from 93 homes being built without a separate construction entrance. The impact on the walking pedestrians, again, because we have no sidewalks, we're a state road, we do have culverts, which is in direct opposition to what they are going to do in their neighborhood. So I understand curb and gutter, but we have culverts. We're okay with that. We don't have sidewalks. We're okay with that. We have a 25 mile an hour speed limit in our neighborhood. We're okay with that. I'm speaking today not to oppose development, but to share my concerns for the design flaws in the proposed dense population development. Design using two exits dumping all proposed new residents onto Ponderosa Circle, one-half and .1 miles into our only road, and also I oppose the seven proposed home lots that begin a half a mile into our existing development on Ponderosa Circle that will directly front Ponderosa Circle. Harry Reed shared that they owned all of this land at one point, okay? So which means they owned all of this land. They are the ones who created the landlock. They are the ones that are creating the opposition because they are the ones that are dumping into our neighborhood. They sold us the lots. I've lived here for 20 years. Most people here have been here for 30 and 40 years. The house next door to me was built in 1965. So this is an existing rural-type community. Dumping all of the traffic to drive through our neighborhood every day, in and out, it's going to ruin the neighborhood. It's going to ruin it. All current Ponderosa lots have a minimum of 95 feet of road frontage. These new homes will not be required to follow established neighborhood setback or lot size. I was told by the developer, these lots right here will be 50 feet. This right here is one lot with one home, right here. So that's that many. That's four lots. It's ridiculous. I walk, I will walk by these homes every day. They are in my neighborhood, but will not follow the aesthetics of the existing neighborhood, a neighborhood on a state road which has been in existence since Lake Norman finished filling in 1963. The proposed development is on a 30-acre farm with a few cows that often come to the fence as I walk by and occasionally escape and take a stroll down the road. It's the rural neighborhood that Ponderosa residents had become accustomed to, away from the hustle and bustle once we exit onto Williamson Road. I've stated I've lived there for 20 years, experienced Mooresville doubling in size and gobbling land to put into their city and overcrowding our county schools. This development is another example and does not have the best interest of Iredale County residents living on Ponderosa Circle. I ask that you please do not release this land to Mooresville. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Jack Smith and Taska Smith?
I live at 184 Ponderosa Circle, and I had a bunch of things I wanted to say, but it's been said expertly with these people. I've lived at Ponderosa for 28 years. My family owned the property another 10 years prior to that. And I've been a real estate broker for 46 years. And I truly believe when I walk out of here tonight, what these people are telling you affects the property, their property values, and the living conditions on what's being proposed up here. And I really request and respect your support. I understand that things will be developed, but when you take property and develop it and have 94 homes on it, when you multiply that times two cars and that times so many a day, and it runs it to like 127,000 cars, will go through from that development through our neighborhood in one year. That doesn't include Ponderosa, doesn't include the salespeople, doesn't include the contractors that's going to be there, doesn't include the suppliers that's going to be there, doesn't include the workers that's going to be there, or anything else. So again, I respect people wanting to develop property, but I think when you get into sales, you know, if you're selling a car, if you sell a car that's cheaper than someone else's, it doesn't affect their value of their car. If you buy a boat and sell it, or you sell a boat, doesn't affect your neighbor's boat prices. But when you go buying and selling property, and if you didn't keep it in perspective of the neighborhood, it does affect it, and it will affect our property values. Thank you for your time, and certainly depend, and I hope that you will respect what's been said here tonight and support us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Neil Howes?
It's Howes.
Howes, okay.
I live at, where's it, a little deep? Right there. I live at 388 Ponderosa Circle. My wife, Janice Swan, has owned that property since 1998. When I take a look at this plan, I see some flaws. First of all, this should be basically less dense because basically it does not blend into this community. You also take a look at this right here. There needs to be a road go through here, right where basically the stoplight is. If you just have one entrance, it's going to be a disaster. You cannot go this way, and half the time if I'm going this way, I've got to go out this way, go to food line and come back down. You've heard the types of hours, and she's right. You cannot leave that neighborhood at certain times of day. You're landlocked. The other concern I have is the environmental section of how that well that's going to be protected because of that cove. And I've seen some times where if it's not done right, runoff can basically hurt the environment. So if you're going to do this, certain restrictions somewhere along the way have got to be start discussing that that road has got to be done here. So basically, this land can be property developed, and maybe we can have a grocery store and pharmacy and some forth. Because if you don't, some child, some parent, some grandparent is going to get hurt. So the whole idea is planning, commissioners, whatever, you hopefully, you all will talk together, talk to DOT, whatever you have to do to get that second entrance done if you plan to do this and lower the density. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Howes. Next, Rick Howard?
Name's Rick Howard. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. I'm here to just speak as an overview, seeing, I'm involved in a lot of development and have been in the area for many years. And this is an opportunity to look at the broader picture, I think, to where the developer that's coming in is actually going to fix a problem for a lot of peoples. A lot of people in the area with running the water and sewer to that area that's been neglected for years. They'll be spending somewhere in the neighborhood of a million dollars to run those water and sewer lines up Al Cove Road and across. And I think tonight, what we're looking, I've been there, I've been at Lake Norman to give you an idea, for 63 years. I watched them build Lake Norman. I watched them build I-77. I've watched all the development happen, some good, some bad. But in general, that's the reason all the people want to live here. People are coming. So if we had taken that attitude back 40, 50 years ago, most of the people in this room wouldn't be living here. If we'd taken, we got it, we don't want anything else. You know, there were days I thought that way, but development's coming. We live in a great community. People want to be here. They're coming. And what we need to make sure we do is we plan properly. We put the infrastructure in. We put the water and sewer in. We get the roads in. That's the reason what we're considering, I think, tonight is to release this to Mooresville, who's going to require the traffic issues to be fixed. There'll be a study done. The issues we're hearing tonight that we're all concerned about, I'm concerned about, those things will be addressed, they will be monitored, and they will be taken care of. I live with it, you know, with multiple developments where we've put in millions of dollars' worth of off-site infrastructure in over the years. So I think what we look at tonight is, we've got a good developer, national developer, well-capitalized, with a plan. Not everybody loves it. Nobody's going to love anything, all, everything. But it's a chance to get something done right. And one thing I've always been concerned with in development is looking around my community where I live and where I've developed and saying, what do I need to do to make sure I protect that? And the thing that we, that was an expensive learning experience for me is sometimes you may get something you don't want. And as I started out early on around Lake Norman, when we first started doing some of the development, there wasn't any zoning. You could do anything you wanted. There was no zone, no zoning. That's only 35 years ago. So if you look at what can happen by right, sometimes it's not a pretty picture, you know? And I've lived through that personally myself, and not been able to secure the land, and something happens. something happens and it's by right, and it just happens. So I would ask the property owners to make sure you know what can happen by right without going before this board or going before the town board in Mooresville. And it, it sometimes isn't really, it's, it's pretty picture. An example, give me an example. People were in the development business and they're looking, this place is wonderful, Iredale County, Southern Iredale County, it's wonderful, and they're looking for sites to do things. And there's a lot of things that can be done by right. One example, just to give you, would be a school. A school. They don't have to come talk to anyone. They buy it, they build it. Churches, not against any of these things, by the way, I'm just telling you, things that can happen. And one thing that has concerned me for the past 15, 20, 30 years, is the septic system in and around Lake Norman. We have a problem coming at us. It's gonna be a big problem on the Brawley School Peninsula and that area, the Langtree, all those areas. We have septic tanks, wells everywhere. And to take a site like this, and somebody gets in there that's not a qualified, planned, professional, they could go in and put 60 homes in, 60 septic tanks, 60 wells, and the next thing you're gonna be like me in a couple spots, wondering why my well's gone dry, and having to go down 800 feet. And, and these things can happen, but the thing I wanna emphasize is that I've learned this lesson myself, is that if you put people in control, which would be Mooresville if you release this, they're gonna have checks and balances that you're not gonna believe that's gonna assure a lot of these things that we're all talking about, and we all, I'm concerned about them, they're gonna make sure that they're looked at, from the retention ponds all the way down. I deal with it regularly. So from an environmental standpoint, if you go the other route, in the county, we have to put ditches in. It's not that they're bad or wrong, but you have to put ditches in. There's no detention ponds. It's ditches, no curb gutter, no water quality, and it's just a rural development, like you see everywhere. But anyway, I just wanted to emphasize that to you, and tell you that I think you gotta, these are great guys, they're great developers, they've done a lot around this community and all over the country, and I think they would probably do a very good job. And the most important thing is we're gonna get water and sewer extended for a mile or more, which has been needed for probably 25 years.
Mr. Howard, just for the record, could you state what your address is?
148 Selview.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Howard. And this is Bill?
Bill Dixon.
All right. I read signatures.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you folks tonight. My name is Bill Dixon, 358 Ponderosa. I just wanna make one simple comment. When you come in Ponderosa Circle, right about here, there's a stream and a creek, and when you get any amount of rain, it then becomes a running stream. Clearly, when there's no rain, it dries out. But I have gone down there and walked through there, and my concern is, with this being a single entrance into this development in a construction route, what happens when that road collapses? How do I get to work every day? Does this board, has this board, or is, has anybody addressed sending some type of an engineer or professional to double-check that lowland? I've looked at that call, and I don't know anything about building and construction. It doesn't look good to me. I do find some confidence tonight in hearing that this board is aware that a separate entrance off of Williamson Road would really be needed and necessary to make this a practical development. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Finally, circling back to Mr. Carter?
All set.
Okay. All right. All hearts free? Is there anybody else that'd like to be heard that didn't have an opportunity to sign up? Well, make sure that...
Can I ask one more?
Okay, sure. Yes, we need to catch you for the mic. Okay, Mr. Canturus?
Yes. I've heard the "by right" brought up a couple times, which I'm gonna assume means they can do this without your approval, but isn't it zoned agricultural right now?
Residential agriculture, I believe.
How many homes right now, without approval, can be put in per acre?
Sixty.
Sixty? On the whole lot?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight. Okay.
Yeah.
And that's with well and septic?
That's fine. I understand that. I appreciate that part.
Or a package plan or something.
Also, I don't, I haven't been here in the area that long, but from what I've heard, the city of Mooresville may just have their eyes glossed over by dollar signs and just go, yeah, approve anything that's put before them. So putting it in their hands is not something I think any of us here who are against it appreciate. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Canturus. This is on a different signup sheet for a public comment period, but Rick Sears?
I, I couldn't cover it.
Okay. Asked and answered. Okay, do we need to take a break? Okay. We're gonna go ahead and take about a five-minute break. Pardon?
Mr. Howard's motion.
I'd like to add one thing that I've left out, I think it's very important. If you haven't studied the entire area around Langtree, I mean Al Cove and Williamson Road, there is a master plan, and there's a flyover coming over from Fairview Road. It'll be coming over to Al Cove Road, and there's a proposed alignment, and this is not something that's in the, well, it's in the planning stage, but it's a reality. It's gonna happen. When that happens, there's definitely gonna be a realignment in and around where your concerns are. And you might wanna call the town of Mooresville, it might be online, I'm not really sure. Is it online? Well, you can go downtown, and they have various, it's a flyover that'll come over to Templeton Road, there'll be a realignment.
Ponderosa? No, it's on Templeton, it's not where we...
But then it's gonna go over and connect into where you're talking about.
It's not gonna connect to Ponderosa.
No, but it'll connect over where the red light is.
Which is not where Ponderosa is.
But, but, but what I'm saying is, there's an opportunity there that in the future, there will be some possible connectivity by the state.
Okay. We're gonna take a five-minute recess, and then we'll reconvene. Okay, we'll now resume open session. The public hearing has been closed. We've heard presentations by staff and the applicants. At this time, I'd like inquire to the fellow commissioners if they have comments or additional questions, and we'll just start from the outside and work our way in. So, Mr. Howard, you wanna start?
I just wanna bring a little clarity to it, if I may. I wanna, I agree with Mr. Reed. You know, the Reeds, the Conns, Brothertons, whoever, their families have made investments over the years, you do have an investment. Where I agree with Mr. Reed is, the, the property and development has to be properly done, and I think that's our goal. Our goal is to have our stakeholders, who would not be annexed if Mooresville annexes you, to have a positive impact. And agreeing with Rick Howard, who's been in development business, he's right. There can be some things for lack of proper development. You can have some impacts come in. And so our goal tonight is to clarify the process, let you guys know as our stakeholders that would not be proposed to be annexed. We can't stop Mooresville from annexing anything. So our goal is to get the developers here, property owners, let them hear your concerns. From our perspective, I think we agree, I personally agree, that the other entrance onto Williamson makes sense for the development. I think talking to some of you, it lessens your concerns and impacts in a positive way. No, you're not gonna get 100% concessions of some of your concerns if, once it is annexed, whether we release ETJ or not. But hopefully, the developer does have a Plan B that he could look at. I know talking to Mayor Adkins today in Mooresville, he authorized me to say, his board is definitely willing to look at your concerns. We've expressed your concerns after many, we had members of this board that have met with the developer and other stakeholders involved. We can't all do that. Some of us have met with you guys and relayed that back to the rest of the board. Our job is to represent you all, the sellers. Profit is not a bad word. Your investments in your family's land over the years, profit, investment, we all understand that. That is not a negative or bad word. So we understand that too. You know, Mr. Howard's family lived there, and these people are passionate about things. Yes, there's been mistakes made in developments in the past in any county where they've allowed the infrastructure to get ahead of the development, because as Mr. Reed said, it wasn't properly done. So what I hope we can accomplish tonight, you know, as Ms. Cash said, our 2030 plan is exactly that, it's a plan. But we can't stop development, we can't stop towns and cities and municipalities from annexing. What we can do on your behalf is to make sure your voices are heard, our concerns are listened to. We can ask the board members in Mooresville and the developer to listen to your concerns and hopefully address as many as possible. Are they gonna address all of them? No, there's no way. From their perspective, there will be positive impacts, I believe, with water and sewer in that area instead of the septic. I think most of you will agree to some degree, there has, there's pros and cons to that. I, I agree, there are pros and cons to any aspect of development. But what makes this make sense to us at some point down the road, whatever happens, is we want to relate to you, we will talk to the town of Mooresville, we have started that process, we can't stop an annexation. I personally agree, I can't speak for my colleagues, that your concerns make sense. The developer has to pay for the water and sewer out to that area. The, the property owners that are there have a right to sell their property and make profit. But hopefully, there will be a happy meeting that all of you can come to at some point. Our goal is to help accomplish that, I believe, you know, so everybody at least can walk away with something that they can all live with. We're not gonna stop development, it's coming, it's there. The good thing is, from all of our perspectives, we have a desirable county to live in. Lot of, you know, we have people coming in, legislators trying to take our sales tax property and redistribute it to other counties, you know? So what we have to do is try on your behalf and collaboratively together with you, is to come to common ground, properly develop the land, smart growth, smart development. And I think these guys, I think, have some plans, and hopefully they heard you tonight, and I hope they can address some of those issues. We can't expect them to hit 100% of them. So whatever we decide to do, Mooresville has ensured me, through the mayor, at least, that they're gonna look at some of those impacts. When they do something, we can't stop that process. Apparently, it's in line to do. So we will make sure that your voices and your concerns are transferred to those guys. But thank you all for coming. These decisions are some of the hardest decisions this board makes, because it impacts somebody good or bad, one way or another. There's no complete winner on any side of this. So, I'm for it.
Well, only thing I have to say on this, really, I spent a lot of time on our Iredale County Planning Board, and one of the things that was handy about it is, you had something put forth before you, and it was either exactly like this, or it wasn't. So we actually had site-specific. And ETJ, they can show us this, that's still not site-specific. They could show another entrance if they wanted to, to us right now. It's still not site-specific. It could change from the time it leaves us to go to Mooresville. Now, I've got heartburn a little bit on this, and it's not 'cause I shoved that... Now, I've got heartburn a little bit on this, and it's not because I shoved that piece of pizza down my throat so fast. The heartburn I have is just, like y'all said, there needs to be another entrance in and out besides Ponderosa Circle. I think anybody can realize that. Assume if it gets out of our hands at some point in time and into Mooresville, that'll happen. If not, I think you're putting y'all at great risk as far as emergency services because you're just trapped. So that part really bothers me. But like I said, know this, they could have drew another entrance in and told us it was there. It may showed up at Mooresville, it may not. So I guess what I'm trying to say, no matter what we do here right now, eventually, that's going to get developed. Probably eventually, it's going to end up in Mooresville's hands, and it's going to be up to y'all to work with Mooresville to try to get what you want out of this. When I went down and took a small tour, I told her, I said, "Get your wish list out because something's going to happen with that land. It won't be farmed." I know everybody likes to look out and see beautiful land farmed and cows standing there, but that's not reality that close to the lake. So I would say, you started a fight, the end's somewhere along the line. I would be preparing to get what I'd want out of this the best I can, and that's the advice I'll give you. We're going to see where we go here in a second as far as a motion. But I do appreciate y'all's effort and you coming out, and thank you for letting me come down and visit with you.
Thank you, Commissioner McNeely.
Yes.
I want to thank Mr. John Danielson for inviting us down. That taught me more than this joint will ever teach me, to be in that community. I understand what was said tonight very plainly, so I know where you folks are coming from, and again, thank you for inviting us down.
It is a balancing act. I don't want to repeat everything Commissioner Hout said, but it is a balancing act between property owners' rights. You folks own property, so do the Clontons, the Brothertons, the Reeds. The key here is, what we do, whether to release or not to release, it's going to Mooresville. Mooresville's going to annex it, they're going to take it, and there's not anything we can do about it. Now, at that point, we want to help try to shape it. This particular area right here, we talked about the 8,000 gallons dumping into Lake Norman. That's a four-inch pipe that spews sewer into the lake, uncontrolled until somebody from Charlotte can drive up here in a pickup truck and shut the valve down. The pump station that they were speaking of a while ago is a complete different animal from that. That is a package plant over in the Diamond Head area. It is designed to overflow into the lake. Actually, after the water's treated, it discharges into the lake. It has to be fishable or swimable, not drinkable, not washable. You don't take a bath now, but anyway. Two different type, two different type pump stations there. This will be a pump station that will gather the sewage and pump it to municipal sewer. It'll be municipal water come out there. That is an advantage to the by right development of well and septic tanks. It's just not a fit, like to continue farming it is not a fit for that area. Well and septic tanks is not a fit for that area. You need municipal water and sewer. Now, the downside to that is, the trade-off is, to get that to your area, it has to be a little more dense development to be able to make that cost-effective to bring it there. Your main concern, I believe, this evening are roads. That is a terrible mess down there. When I drove to this meeting this evening, it takes me longer to come through Mooresville than it does to drive from Mooresville to Statesville. I understand completely where you're coming from. If it's developed permitted by right, there will be no TIA study. We don't require one because we develop rural land. There will be no curb gutter, storm runoff management plan, there'd be none of that because we don't do that. It's just, we don't require it. It will be less lots, but you talk about getting painted into a corner. You put 48 more lots, 48 more septic tanks, 48 more wells, and 100 more cars onto that highway, it's just going to make it worse. So what I would like to propose this evening is, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to table this issue this evening. I would like an opportunity for this board to work with the developer, make some changes to this plan, encourage, encourage the developer to be sensitive to what we've heard here this evening, get an antidote to some of these problems, and then present it as best we can because Mooresville's going to take it and mark it up with their red pen all they want to. There's no guarantee that anything we cut, a deal that we cut with the developers, hey, you've got to do all these things. There's no guarantee that when it gets to Mooresville, Mooresville won't undo it. I don't think that's likely because typically, Mooresville will require more stringent regulations than what we do. So I think your fight's not over. As I discussed with a few citizens earlier, you have a representation from ETJ on the town planning board. We appoint representatives to that planning board. I would encourage you to contact those folks and talk to them in the planning stages. Let your voice be heard, and I know most of those folks, they're logical-thinking people. This is not the first rodeo for the town of Mooresville. They've been through it. They've made mistakes just like we have, and they've learned from them. So they're not going to let them run roughshod over you on this. Now, that's despite the Highway 115 development that was passed, or that the planning board passed last week, but anyway. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to table this, let this board work with the developer, see if we can't get some common ground here and make some suggestions because the reality is, that's all we can do is suggest, really. We're not going to stop this development. Mr. Mallory, Chairman Mallory and I, worked with Mooresville over the past couple of years, and that's the reason that they annex twice a year rather than just one time a year. We're working on that plan. We hate the fact that you guys got caught up in the middle of this because the first time it came to this board, you were pretty much caught in the middle. That's the reason we called timeout, we've got to work on it. But it will be developed by Mooresville, and we want to have as much influence as we can to try to help everybody because I support the Clontons family, the Brotherton family, and the Reed family for being able to sell that property. You know, they ought to be able to do it, it's property owners' rights. But there again, you guys have property owners' rights as well. In zoning, it's more about, it's pretty much satisfying the offended without offending the satisfied, and sometimes that can be a hard thing to do. So my motion stands at the table. Hang on just a second.
Commissioner Bowles, I'd just recommend that you add a date to that table.
Okay.
To a date certain.
Okay. Is that, is that the drop-dead date?
This meeting July.
Okay. July 18th, second meeting in July.
We're not having a meeting typically the first week of July.
Yeah. It is, it is the 18th. With that, I would, I would, I would add that to my motion, Mrs. Chairman, that that date would be July 18th.
Motion by Vice Chairman Bowles to table this matter until our July 18th meeting. Is there discussion?
One part of, I guess, order, the public comment is closed on this now. It will only be to the board's motion, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, did you have comments on your opinion on this?
I was going to just chime in.
Okay.
Check with everybody else. I really do appreciate the, the professional discussion of your concerns because it is an emotional event. You're talking about impacts on the most important investment that anybody makes economically and emotionally in terms of just where you live. So I want to thank everyone, despite different perspectives, for sharing their concerns in a very respectful way and an informative way. I, I agree with the comments by fellow commissioners relative to the concerns that we have and also the restrictions and limitations we have as a board legally. As Vice Chairman Bowles was saying, after having been through this ring-dang-doo over a year ago, we said, "Why are we doing this to us? I know we're trying to respond to people's concerns, and we don't have any control over the outcome, and it's a year out." And so Mooresville Town Board accommodated that to accelerate their annexation hearings to once every six months so that there'd be a shorter flash-to-bang time between a request for ETJ. And there are reasons to have an ETJ request in terms of the ability for developers to accelerate the planning process and the permitting process and get all the things lined up so that it moves as smoothly as possible. But we do have, and, and I must say, you know, shared concerns, many of the residents of Ponderosa neighborhood that have been laid out, and what we expect, and as has been mentioned, we, we don't have a, a legal right to impose any kind of changes to plans. We don't have a legal right to enforce any of those proposed changes when they ultimately are decided upon by the town of Mooresville Board. However, we are a county of different jurisdictions, but we're all neighbors, you know? And so what we do run on in this county is not the, you know, well, you sign this, you know, I'm holding you to the letter of the law. We all try to work together and share mutual respect with one another, and we do that from our board to the municipal boards, to the boards of education, all realizing that we have different lanes and fields to plow, but that we work better when we work together as opposed to working at cross purposes. So although legally, the town of Mooresville is fully within rights to implement zoning and all of their restrictions, which are significantly greater, as has been noted, than the county's more rural approach, nonetheless, when we take it to them and say, "Look, we have concerns about our citizens that are not being brought into Mooresville and the impacts on them, and so we will get a fair hearing," I am convinced, "on your behalf, but you do need to be involved in that process." You know, the traffic congestion is a situation that I think, you know, speaking for myself only, I can just say that, you know, that's just a, a showstopper for me, you know? If we're going to go forward on an ETJ positive response, got to address this second entrance to get my vote, and I suspect that the, most of the other commissioners feel likewise. Also, I'd like some information on berms and buffers, about where they will go and, and how you can ameliorate some of the concerns, especially looking at the design of the, the seven lots that are going to front on Ponderosa. Understand, you're squeezing out every bit of property that you can, and that's understandable. But those particular lots are not self-contained. They do impact the character of the neighborhood, which is, as has been pointed out, a significantly different lot size, house size, and everything else. And so the more self, more completely contained within your boundaries, I think that is a more appropriate design. The construction entrance, you know, that needs to be, I think, planned from the get-go because you cannot have, you know, your construction equipment going across that one point of ingress and egress to this neighborhood. And finally, I echo the, the appreciation for the quality of the development. I think that, you know, you have a well-deserved reputation, and with water and sewer, the impacts will be significantly reduced as far as the environmental concerns. But these other issues, I think, need to be addressed in good faith, and I believe that they'll get a, an appropriate hearing at the time, at the appropriate time by the city of Mooresville, town of Mooresville. Any further comments? Motion by Vice Chairman Bowles. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed like sign. Motion carries unanimously. The matter is tabled until July 18th meeting of this board. Thank you. We'll now move on to next items on the agenda. There are no announcements, vacancies. There are no appointments to any boards or commissions. I don't believe there's any unfinished business.
Skipped administrative matters.
What?
Administrative matters.
Consent agenda.
Oh, yeah. And we do have item eight, administrative matters that are appropriate for our consent agenda, and please, please, please keep it down to a dull roar. And Mr. Smith, if you'd please summarize those for the record.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Item 8.1 is a request from Solid Waste for approval of the design and engineering plan for landfill cell number six. In this agreement, this design will be handled by municipal engineering and will go for the life of the site, which is a 39-acre portion, and will have capacity for 20 years. 8.2 is a request from Trinity VFD for approval to move forward with replacement of Station 1, and this station is also going to include a base for EMS, rescue, Iredale Rescue Squad, and a touchdown point for the sheriff's office. Item 8.3 is a request from ECOM for approval of budget amendment number 30 to spend 911 fund balance and transfer disallowed expenses, and this is going to allow us to apply for a reconsideration grant. 8.4, request from the Tax Administration Office for approval of April refunds and releases. And 8.5, a request from the clerk to the board for approval of the minutes from May 2nd, 2017.
Are there any further discussion on the administrative matters? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda, sir.
Motion by Commissioner McNeely. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on, this is a public comment period. Is anyone here to opine?
It's time for the press to speak up.
Okay. Moving on then, is there any new business to come before the board? County managers' report, Mr. Smith.
Okay, I've got two things, three things, actually, I'd like to go through real quick. One is, this is a cleanup, actually. Back in April of this year, the board approved a contract with the Lake Norman Transportation Committee or Commission, and the amount that was approved was $15,000. And I don't know where the wires got crossed, but the actual number needs to be $15,750. And if that is okay, if the board would vote to, to approve that, I will get the chairman's signature, if you don't mind.
Okay. Is there a motion? Move. Okay. Motion by Commissioner Norman to allocate $15,750 to the Lake Norman Transportation Commission.
Thank you.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Over the, probably in the next day or so, I'm going to forward out a proposed resolution. I've mentioned to you all, we've had a lot of legislative issues coming up this year. One of particular note is Senate Bill 594, House Bill 608. This is the Family and Child Protection and Accountability Act. This is the legislation that would basically regionalize DSS operations throughout the state. Significant impact on Iredale County, and we have a proposed resolution, did not get it done in time to add to the agenda tonight, but I'd like to forward that along with some comments that Yvette Smith has provided from her association, state association, that makes some very good points. And if the board is willing to do so, then possibly at the next meeting, adopt a resolution to, to deal with, render an opinion on this, on this legislation.
Mr. Smith, if you could circulate that by email, and perhaps if each of us could respond, then we wouldn't have to wait two weeks. respond, then we wouldn't have to wait two weeks to be able to get a resolution in the hands of our legislators, because this is time-sensitive.
Okay, absolutely.
Do we need to make a motion that we will resolution it if so approved by email then?
Yes.
I'll make that motion then, that if affirmed by email, they will send the resolution on.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And final, final item is, looks like we have a recommended budget after the last couple meeting, or last couple Mondays of budget meetings. We are planning to have a public hearing on, at our next meeting, June 6th, and we will have a budget, a budget ordinance prepared for you. In the event that you do feel led to adopt the budget that night, we'll have everything in place, barring any changes that come from the public hearing. I'd personally thank you all for your work, it's a lot of hours sitting there going through the numbers and the $195 million budget that we have this year.
Well, Mr. Smith, I can say that, on behalf of the board, that we appreciate you and your staff and all the directors of the departments for the tremendous amount of time and effort that they put into preparation, review, and recommendation of their department budgets and the overall county budget. It's, it's, it's a year, as you noted in your budget message, where a lot of the growth that we've experienced that has created the additional revenues has also now created the additional demand for services. And trying to square that circle was a significant task, and the staff and you did a superb job in terms of presenting us options that were in line with the strategic guidance that we shared with you in our February winter retreat. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have already disposed of the matters, as noted before, in the closed session. Anything further for the good of the order?
I'd like to thank Ron and all the staff, too. After the winter retreat, I thought I was going to throw up before I got to my car, and now I can walk out there in peace and feel pretty good about it.
We're glad that you're able to retain your downtime.
Hold it down. Hold it down.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Pizza purple wouldn't look good.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Norman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. You're adjourned.